Are you ready, Kevin? I'd like to call to order the Cohasset Select Board meeting of Tuesday, February 11th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We are meeting at 91 Sawyer Street, Wilcox Commons. This is an in-person meeting. If you'd like to watch virtually, the details are on the back page of the agenda via Zoom link. You can watch on 143 Comcast Local Cable or on Facebook Live. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chris Plex here.
Paul Gravy.
Jack Creighton here.
David Ferrag here.
Ellen Marr present. I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A public comment? Is there any public comment? No, okay. Kevin, nobody online for public comment? Okay, thank you. So, um, at our last meeting, we opened a public hearing for a petition for the joint or identical poll locations with National Grid in Verizon, New England, and I failed to close that public hearing. So I would like a motion to close the public hearings of for National Grid in Verizon of Tuesday, February 4th.
Stumbled.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're now closed on that. Okay, next up, Safe Harbor Grant Issue. So Cory and Nicole want to come up?
Yep.
Microphone. Use this.
Yes, please.
Shirt's on. Look it up.
That's all. All right. This is, this is new. Thank you for having us this evening. So essentially, um, many at home may know, they may not know, but, um, Safe Harbor is a drug-free community grant. Um, and we get $125,000 a year for 10 years. We're in year eight. Um, and that grant is funded through the CDC. So we have experienced some delays in that funding, but fortunately, we were able to get that, that funding into our account. But it really expedited, expedited our thought process on how do we make sure that our coalition and the work that we do is sustained past this federal funding? Or if we were to, you know, not have it tomorrow? And one step there is just, you know, general PR that this, this funding is very important. It's crucial to the work that we do. The grant that we have right now, 80% of it is salary, 20% of it is programmatic. But that, those salaries are what are driving and propelling the work that's being done as well. So, um, we just really wanted to emphasize the importance of this funding. And if we were to experience any other delays, that we would keep everyone posted and updated.
Anything additional?
Cory Evans, uh, serving as treasurer for Safe Harbor. So Safe Harbor, as Nicole said, 80% of kind of the, the daily costs are, um, or the grant goes towards, 80% of the grant goes towards salary. So, um, if we do have a longer disruption, we don't have, there's not enough cash in any of our gift accounts to kind of cover really any long-term. One of the short-term worries we had was, uh, last week, we had, uh, how many students was it?
Seven.
We had seven students and some chaperones in DC for a leadership conference. Uh, the funding for that comes from, uh, from the grant. And so we, at Safe Harbor, we have a gift account which can kind of float some things, but it's not a whole lot of money. So, um, delays, um, delays of this nature can impact stuff if they continue. So we want to be sure that you guys are aware. We want to also thank, um, you know, Mr. Senior for, uh, also addressing this quickly. Uh, and Pat O'Connor's office as well was very responsive to us, um, just giving us some guidance on what to expect. So we're passionate about this program again. It's one of a kind really in the region. It's student-led, the numbers are excellent when it comes to addressing alcohol and drug use in, you know, middle of high schools. And, um, we think it's, it's really, it's a, it's a shining star. It's an example of what this can be. So we want to, you know, we're passionate about keeping it going and not having to make any hard decisions about how we, Russ. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Plex, any comments or questions?
Uh, just one question. Was there any communication with the release of funds? An explanation or the money just showed up?
Uh, there, there wasn't really. It was essentially, um, we were monitoring, watching the funds come in and they were just taking a little bit longer than usual.
Thank you.
Mr. Grady?
No, no question. I think it's fantastic news.
Mr. Creighton?
Well done. As you know, I've been a supporter almost from the beginning and, um, Cohasset can be very proud that we stepped before many communities. And I remember learning, I think it's from you, how important it is to hit the kids in junior high school. Because they're vulnerable, the high school kids, for better or for worse, they're probably not as reachable and being charitable. But understanding where the real problem is, which is the, um, social media influenced middle school kids was crucial. And I think the town owes you a debt of gratitude for bringing that to us, uh, our attention. And thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you. Mr. Ferrag?
Thanks again. I was able to attend the annual breakfast for Safe Harbor this year. Um, and I fully support the work they do. And I just want to thank you for, uh, working on it and keeping, working on it in the future. And, and the results will follow.
Appreciate the support.
So I, I'd like to, you know, thank Cory reached out to me immediately once, once you guys had a sense that, that funding had, had ceased. And I think you took all the right steps contacting, um, Representative Moschino, Senator O'Connor and, um, who's our, our, our federal, um,
Keating?
Keating, sorry. Sorry, yes, Congressman Keating's office. I, I think though, it's kind of, it, I, I don't want to say it's foreshadowing of something, but we ought to maybe think about other sources of non-federal revenue. I don't, I mean, I know the state's in kind of a difficult financial position, but are there state grants? Are there local hospital grants? Are there, are there other areas that we can tap into? You know, just, just in case, you know, this, this stops, you know, we get another stoppage.
Yeah, and obviously we're not alone. I mean, communities around, so, but this is, um, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to say it's a real cost, but this is kind of, this is how it hits us and it hits us pretty quickly. Because again, we, there's not a whole lot of money floating around to, you know, continue with, it's a really lean program by design, right? We want to be efficient, uh, and we want to be effective. Uh, but that also means that, um, uncertainty can really, can really hurt. And, you know, programs that we've have planned, we have a mailer which goes out every year. We post, we had to postpone that. That just tells everybody, new people in town, you know, or people that don't know about us, right? This is how we get the word out. Um, so it, it, it does affect us. So we're, you know, obviously happy that we're through this part, but we're also, you know, I, I think like everybody, a little nervous about the future because this is, this is public health. So.
How does the funding come? Is it monthly? Is it quarterly or is it biannually?
It's monthly, so I will get, sorry, I will get, um, a report from finance and at the first of every month. And I'll draw down from the payment management system.
Okay.
And it reimburses the town.
Okay. All right. Great, thank you. Thank you for all your work and resolving the issue quickly.
Thanks for the support.
Yeah, thank you for it. Honestly, it, it means more than, than most know at home. I mean, it, it is crucial.
Yeah. When is the, the next youth survey?
That is in, I can't tell the exact date.
Okay.
But it's in April or May.
Oh, okay, so it is.
It's this year.
It's this year.
Yep.
Okay. Great. Maybe we'll have you back and you can share with us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, so it'll be in those two months, grades seven through 12 this year.
Okay.
We'll get that data analyzed.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. Okay, so, um, next up, Boarding Committee Updates, Discussion of Open Town Meeting Committee and Board Positions. Positions I had mentioned, um, at the last meeting, you know, how, how many, um, and I, I don't have my note with me, but how, how many elected positions are there? And how many, uh, committee positions are there? And, um, I just would like us all to, to start thinking about how we can support filling these positions. Our town government relies on these boards and committees and the plethora of choices can suit many interests and aptitudes. Requires commitment and a high level of expectation to engage more deeply in civic affairs and stay informed. Contributing brings a high level of satisfaction. And I encourage anyone who may have interest on serving on a board, reach out to any of us or any member of any board to ask questions about that board's missions and objectives. Look at the posted agendas and minutes to gauge a sense of frequency of meetings and outcomes. You can watch, uh, meeting videos on the homepage of the town website. There's a board and committee button. You just hit it and then you can hit a playlist and you can find any board or committee you want to watch a video on. And I'd, I'd like to hear from my colleagues, like everyone's ideas on how we can create some interest and excitement about getting people engaged and involved. Mr. Plex? Yes, I would love to hear from people.
Two thoughts. One, we, we all have our own networks, neighborhoods, connections. A lot of times the issue is people just aren't aware. My experience is that by and large, people want to contribute, people want to help. People want to take an hour or two here and there to contribute to their town. So I think it's important to get the word out. There's no more effective word than the word of mouth from a friend or a neighbor. And something that we've noticed is, uh, I don't want to say a chronic problem, but it, it seems to be persisting is, it's just hard to communicate with the community generally. So we've got to be creative with social media, the anchor, and just be thinking about what are other ways to get the word out? Because I do think it's just a matter of letting people know that these opportunities are there. And, uh, if we do a good job of that, I think we'll get a lot of good people volunteering.
Okay. I like, I like the social media idea that just, it seems to be hits the most amount of, of people. Cause even the anchor, you have to be connected either on email or on Facebook to, you know, to, to see, see what they have to say. Anyone else?
On, on that similar, um, you know, method, this publication called South Shore News, which is attempting to launch, I think it's launched, I don't know how well it's going to do, but they're using AI, al- alternative intelligence. And they, you can literally take a transcript and condense it. And it's very efficient. It doesn't take a lot of, uh, people time to do that. And I know that they're attempting to expand into Cohasset. I think we've done it with some other communities. We used to have two robust newspapers, um, a lot of dialogue, a lot of discussions. Maybe we can generate that through the electronic and we'll see how it plays out. But people should, could, should keep an eye out for that. It's called South Shore News.
Mr. Ferrag, anything?
Add it to what everyone had, maybe some flyers that could be left places, you know, the library, a place where people aggregate. Seabird Coffee downtown, you know, anywhere where people, uh, congregate, if we could maybe have some flyers up or something like that, that would help. Even, even, uh, even talking to the clergy, that's where maybe they could announce something as well.
Mr. Grady?
Yeah. I'm going to go out on a limb tonight. I think we have to incentivize them. I seriously do. I think to get people on board, involved, that want to be, and a lot of the homes nowadays are too, both parents are working. It's, it's, it's a time constraint. They see that, you know, it's their town, they're paying taxes, and that's not calling anybody selfish. We've all raised families and raising families. But it's very much a time constraint. It's, I think, I think that incentivizing, bringing them on board, and I, December, I'm way out in left field here. I agree with everything my colleagues have said. Jack just brought up something about South Shore News. That's an interesting, uh, thing. I've been hearing more and more about them lately. It looks like it's going to be a heck of an operation. But, you know, to get people involved, it's, um, you know, how about a free dump sticker? You know, I, I'm not kidding. I mean, you know, just get it, you, you, you get a free, one, one, you know, one vehicle, you get a pass for, on all, on all points passed with the town, for the RTF, the beach. You know, and then people start seeing that, and it's, well, gee, that's not a bad thing. I mean, that's going to save me a couple hundred, but I mean, I'm also going to get involved in the town.
Yeah.
I know it's unorthodox. But, you know, we've seen our supply of candidates dwindling. And, um, you know, maybe if they see it and they have that, say, quote-unquote pass, or they had that, and it might make it fun. It might just get more up to the table. Um, again, I don't know. First, you might be interested, would we be able to do that if it's a town, if we wanted to do that? No, again, again, I'm, I'm going on a limb. I said that. So, but we've tried, we've tried.
It's like 150 people.
Well, we've tried, and so what? But we've tried, we've tried, we, we do the social media, we do all the postings, people welcome to volunteer, um, you know, and more of, uh, I know we have the boards and committees, thank you thing every year and, uh, but also, eliminate, you know, if you can get boards and committees, just to, you know, there's a guaranteed time, you know, that you're not out getting home from work, going to a meeting, and getting to bed at 11, 12 o'clock. Do you see what I'm saying? And some can run.
Yeah.
We've seen that, we've all been part of that, 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 that program. So it's maybe trying to finite, if we have to stretch out, just we don't jam as much activity into one meeting as it possibly can on the agenda. So, uh, those are the things I would look at, like meetings, you know, you're going to contribute two or three hours, however it's structured. And again, I'm just stepping out, out of the box here is, you know, come on board, you know, the town does appreciate it. So here's a free, you know, here's a free pass for you for one vehicle. I'd say, again, I don't know if we can even do that. This is something that's occurred to me.
It's an idea, yeah.
And Chris, can we do that?
I will ask. I, I mean, I know that the board, some boards are already paid, so I mean, um, I, I don't know, but the rest of it, I can ask.
Okay.
See what else people do in other communities. So we've been talking about this internally and Kevin's been working on, kind of, a camp, a meeting, a campaign and, and was kind of backwards, if we were going to do it well. Put up questions, like, are you passionate about public health, climate sustainability, green energy? Here are the communities for you. Are you interested in, uh, future classes, schools, educational programs? Here are the communities for you, kind of like.
Yeah, yeah.
So Kevin's working on, on, on those questions, circulating them to all of you. And if you have any thoughts about it. I'd be interested if we could grab people too.
Right.
Yeah. And we also wanted to get some current committee members to get short videos, 30 seconds, why are you a member? Uh, I'm, I'm Kevin Perry and I joined the communications committee because I really love to get involved.
Right.
So we wanted to get some, I'm Carol Bestick and I joined because I love Cohasset's history, right? So we want to get some faces and, and so I, if you have any thoughts about it, people might be willing to do that, right? If you're willing. Kevin, no. Uh, because we wanted to do like a rotating campaign on our social media pages. If you remember, during the, during the, during COVID, we did something like this. We did like a long recruitment video where everyone had a little short segment. We got stationed together. I think, uh, Slav and Evans did that, or I guess that, I think in 2020.
Yeah, you could, you could actually do a couple, you know, and space them out between, you know, now, now and now in June and hit the different. I do, I do, I do think generally people don't understand the breadth of committees and the variety of, of things that, you know, if you're interested in, if you're a finance guy, advisory is good. If you're, you know, you like history, we have a couple of, a couple of those. So I, I think it's really communicating the breadth of, of what we have to offer. I think we did talk, Chris, maybe at the, uh, rec fair on March 27th, having a table?
And we did, we, we got a table.
Okay.
And we arranged a table, so on March 23rd.
23rd, okay.
And in the afternoon, uh, there'll be a table at the rec fair. So if any of you are willing to spend a little time there.
I will.
We were actually, we made some t-shirts, made two for the little people. I'm on a committee, ask.
Oh, oh, that's good.
And see if people will, you know, uh, come up to you. And then, because so many people there, right, who have served, because if you're better active, you're going to be there probably, you know, so, um, or I still have people there acting, acting. So, you know, maybe it is like that, want to have a fun idea too. And we'll have the videos rolling up.
Great. Okay. Great, thank you.
This is the earliest of course conversations. So this is, it's a good head start, to start February.
Yeah, well, I had asked Tracy for, for the, the list of openings and it's quite daunting. So I, I, I think it's important. Okay, next up, um, change of manager application, South Shore Playhouse Association and DBA South Shore Music Circus. Do we have anyone? There? No? Tracy, I'm having difficulty finding the application. If there's no, this doesn't, doesn't need to. Okay, um, so Ross Roncelli?
Yes.
Okay, is the proposed new manager, um, for the South Shore Music Circus? I don't know if Chief Quigley is on.
Yeah, so the chief is on, but in that package, it was a background check.
Background check. Okay. Okay. All right, we, we can move on. Is that okay with the board? Okay, so then next up, um, town manager intent to renew the contract of vote. So not too long ago, we finished the town manager mid-cycle review and all of us here at the table had the opportunity to complete the evaluation tool, which included sections for commentary and narrative. And all of us had the opportunity to speak with town manager individually to discuss our perspectives. Per the town manager contract, which is easily accessible on the town website, we must advise our intent to renew by February 28th of this year, the final year in the existing contract. And this is simply a vote to advise that the select board has an intent to renew the contract. It's not an automatic renewal of the contract, actual renewal of the contract. If the vote were in the affirmative, would be pending contract negotiations. Okay. So, um, the proper form is to have a motion and then we have a second and then we can have a brief dialogue. So, is that okay with everybody or would everyone prefer to talk first?
Well, I think we could move that to.
Okay. All right, so can I have a motion, um, to advise the town manager, we have an intent to renew his contract?
So.
May I have a second? Mr. Plex? I'd like a roll call vote, all in favor?
Oh, what are we voting on?
We're, we're voting on, on the agenda item, the town manager intent to renew the contract.
So this is a motion to renew?
Correct.
And we're not going to have any discussion?
No, I said we would have a motion and a second and then we could have discussion.
Okay, so are we having discussion now or are we having a vote?
We haven't. Okay. Mr. Grady made the motion, Mr. Plex seconded the motion. I asked for a roll call and now you would like conversation. So, um, Mr. Plex, do you have any comments?
No, no comment.
Mr. Grady?
Not this time.
Mr. Creighton?
Yes. Mr. Senior's been top manager.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry, may I just caution you that comments in public must be, um, related to performance only? And anything relative to character reputation is not appropriate for a public meeting.
Thank you. And I wasn't posing to do that, but I appreciate that you're making sure that you have all your bases covered. I don't think that it's appropriate to renew Mr. Senior's contract. There have been issues, but I think my real issue is, um, has, has to do with term limits. How long he's been here? Been here for a very long period of time. And there's a tendency when you get entrenched in a position where things, um, become very difficult and it's more about retaining the, uh, position than perhaps serving the town of Cohasset. And there have been some issues which people who follow this are well aware of, of intemperate outbursts. Those, that is a matter of public record.
Okay.
You have attempted to shut that down before and it will not be shut down again. And if, as long as you brought that up, Mr. Senior made a cutting motion with his head to you.
Mr. Creighton.
And you tried to shut me off when I was reading a public document.
It wasn't a public document.
October 29th it was.
I will, I will rule you.
And I will, and I will continue. I will continue. And I was bringing this up more to say, what happens when people get entrenched and they've been there too long? As people know, I was on the, uh, Conservation Commission for a number of years. I served as chairman of that commission. I probably served, um, nine, 10 years, uh, served as chairman for probably four or five. And I put in, in effect, term limits, which I think is very important. And I think it's time for us to be looking for new blood. There's a lot of, um, town managers out there. I'm also concerned that we have a town manager who has, and, and has a public record, actively seeking, been a finalist for other towns. So if we think about moving forward, what is the commitment there? We already know on two, perhaps three things you've been actively looking. And I think it's time that we decide, we're going to see what else is out there. After a while, we could decide maybe to renew that. But at this point, I, I think it's premature to do that. I also believe very firmly in, uh, term limits. I did that when I was Chair of Conservation, put into effect. I have also, and as people around town already know, that I'm ending my second term and I've decided not to run. It's common knowledge around town. And the reason is for term limits. I got 62% of the vote in the last election. I have strong support around town. I have a lot of people who are very upset because I'm not running, but I believe in term limits. And I believe that it's important to put your principles and act on your principles. And I think that we should have that principle right now. And I think we should be very premature to indicate we're going to move forward. I think we should have an open and robust search for retirement. And maybe Mr. Senior will end up coming at the top of the heap. But for now, where we have a situation which is actively looking for other jobs, we should not commit ourselves at this time. So I think it's very important that the select board not indicate that we're going to renew him for effectively another year until it happens, another three years, you know, four or five years. Thank you.
Mr. Ferrag?
Great, thank you. I was really torn about this issue because since coming on the board, uh, last June, uh, since that time and coming on the board and dealing with the town manager, my experience beforehand was dealing with one town hall issues with some of the other board issues that I was on. Frankly, fine. Uh, in the last year, when I first got on the board, the first thing that came out of the gate was the hiring of the senior senate director, which we all know what happened with that. I would say as a postscript, um, the, our assistant elder services director ended up leaving. So we now had to hire two positions instead of one, uh, which left a hole. And she ended up taking a job in a town in Pembroke to be the elder services director there. So she went to a town that was two and a half times the size of Cohasset, that's opening up a new $19 million facility, uh, to be shared with recreation there in Pembroke. So if there was any indication that that person didn't have the ability to do the job, that certainly isn't the case because they went to a town that was bigger than ours. That had a, and that had more resources for the new place that they were opening compared to ours. Then after that, in July, we had, um, where the town manager went to seek employment with another town in Parkington. He made it to the final cut, uh, to be one of the finalists and, and frankly, he was the most qualified out of, out of that group. Um, so it's, it's a both, uh, it's a double-edged sword. It was a great thing that he made it, uh, again, because of his, you know, what he had done, but also because he didn't get it, he was looking for employment somewhere else. So then we had that in July and then following up, going into the fall, um, you know, there was a few other matters to deal with. And then of course, in October, when we had a meeting regarding the seniors and things like that, you know, that, I won't rehash that. regarding the seniors and things like that, you know, that I won't rehash that. So I guess in looking at, that's not even within a year. That's probably within what, eight, nine months of me being on the board, seeing all this. So because of all that, I, I, I don't, I think in the best interest of town, I don't have any other way to go but to vote no on this. And I, I wish it wasn't the case, but that's the way I'm going to vote and I would say that if you've had any boards, whether it would be corporate, nonprofit, other municipalities, if you saw all of that in just one year, it might make you have a pause as to what, what you'd be looking to, to extend anybody on, on those circumstances. So that's the end of my comments on that. Thank you.
Okay. Motion is on the floor and seconded to renew to advise the town manager of an intent to renew his contract. So can I have a roll call vote, Mr. Plex?
Chris Plex, aye.
Mr. Grady?
All Grady, aye.
Ellen Marr, aye. Mr. Creighton?
Uh, Jack Creighton, nay.
Mr. Frog?
Uh, David Frog, nay.
Okay. So since this was in the affirmative, the next step would be to appoint a subcommittee to begin negotiations with the town manager and I will confer with council on the proper setup of that. Okay. Next up is the town warrant review of articles. Oh, is, I'm sorry, let me backtrack to the change of manager application. Is, there's no one here? All right, can we defer this Tracy? Okay, thank you. Town manager warrant. So we have a draft warrant. Tracy gave us all a hard copy. Mr. Senior?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chair. The first cut, it's actually from, from our past experience, a very short one. There's seventeen articles, several of them are very super routine, you know, the pretty nice citizens and employees and board and reports of committees. Obviously the operating budget and capital plan and all the big items are very important. The only other things that are on this are somewhat unusual would be the creation of the revolve fund for the RTF. The potential removal of the advisor fire department service or stolen initiatives that were on a path that that could be a potential article, so it's under the drought. And then some amendments to the flood plan overlay district, the town did it, but not changes back in December, but unfortunately one wrench in the state didn't tell the other wrench in the state what it wanted to do so we didn't get our information that we needed to. I think the site does have that, there's a couple of pieces that need to be extended. I do know that the alternative management committee has just perhaps sponsored, I think the select board is interested in sponsoring article to this climate action partnership the state has. Again, I think that would be important. And I do know that at least one party met with the town and the town council during the open session for anyone who was interested in positive association, so possible association among the sewers.
Okay.
That might be, you know, that in front of the that's it, everything's underway. And I am interested in the town, I'm seeing the conversation and I'm going to talk over.
Yeah.
And, uh, oh, and our warrant is very traditional, so. Just kind of like leaders from all the zone, successful.
Right, speaking of zoning, is it because of a state change, are we going to have to tweak the ADU?
Don't know.
Okay.
Their draft rates that are out there, I haven't heard some of the work.
Okay. Okay, I thought I, I had heard that we might have, we might be in that position, so there might be one.
Yes, that, that is true, that is possible. Just thought, okay, yeah, because no one's, it's, it's possible.
Okay.
So there's really no need to doubt the budget. They don't, they're not aware of anything else right now. We sent out a request to all committees and each other departments of the town back in December. We got a couple back, but there hasn't been a lot.
Um, CPC, will we get a presentation or a recap of what's been proposed for CPC?
Yeah, so everything has to come to advisory in the select board before.
Okay.
So you get to comment.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have any comments or questions? No? Okay. We'll move on to our budget presentations. Please fire in harbor.
I've got to actually start with this a little more down this one, just so it picks you up a little better. Move over? If you want to move over, yeah. I'll look to the test. Have you been able to keep this in front of me, Kevin, or not?
No.
So if you would bring up the PowerPoint, Kevin.
Are we going to start with police or town?
No, I just got to start overall.
Overall, okay.
Before we jump in.
So it's this one that we got?
Yes, you got to get this first. Just got to get some highlights. Then it's going to be harbor. I'm going to let Lori go first.
Okay.
All right, here we go. Do we need to talk another microphone or we're good? Okay. So the, you all have this front here, but so just some quick highlights. So, um, the, uh, the foundations, I'm looking at my factors. So we got to start off with two important foundations. Triple A credit rating, which was reaffirmed by standard of course citing very strong management with comprehensive financial policy practices, which are in the process of starting to review, which is another best practice to review your practices. And we won our twelfth annual comprehensive financial report award. Says that our financial statements are meeting a high quality national standard, which is a very important item, both for the bond rating, but also just for professionalism in finance. The goals, and these goals are lifted from the select board's budget message. Maintain our triple A bond rating because it supports critical investments in school and municipal infrastructure. We're going to start investing, we're going to be borrowing money, the more we save on interest, the more, less it costs the taxpayer. Maintain, maintain high quality service delivery. That's always, and I'm not without, you know, rather than call it level service, I'm saying maintain high quality service delivery. So we're not adding things, but maintaining everything that we do as well as we can. And then support all the major projects. And I just listed a few of them, one thirty-five King, which is the public safety building. February twenty-fifth is the plan. You'll be getting a more in-depth presentation on that. So at the next board meeting. Sixty-two L motivations, which are tied into this, one thirty-five King. Forty-one Highland repairs, which we've talked about a little bit and we'll talk about more. The Osgood roof and the MSBA accelerator prepare program that we're not part of. And then road sidewalk improvements, which are an ongoing part of our plan. So those are big goals. What are the challenges? Well, so the biggest challenge, and I've already highlighted this for you, is that our healthcare costs are projected to increase by more than fifteen percent. Well, meaning with our representative from Maya in the next couple of weeks, so we should have a little bit better handle on that. I hope it'll be less. And I'm hoping we can find ways to make some plan changes. Inflation continues to run around three percent. That's, you know, we have been working with a less than two percent for years and now it's, it's calmed down from its, its peak, but it's still running at least Metro Boston, three plus. All of our union contracts, both on the school and town side are up for renewal and those are coming up for three year new contracts. Our property casualty and workers comp insurance continues to rise. I mean, we're doing everything we can to maintain best practices. That said, you know, they're affected by the national markets. And then we all know that there's a FY twenty-five school budget deficit. And what we have to do to plug that this year will most certainly affect our ability to do things next year. So just a point to understand that. And I know that they're working hard and I've had a lot of meetings. I appreciate all the, the, the open door that Superintendent Shannon has had, having a lot, a lot of great conversations and I'm, I'm optimistic that we will get to where we need to be for the greater good of the community. So, um, so one of some of the highlights as we move forward, well, we've already talked about making the RTF an enterprise fund. That's really important, number one. So the taxpayers aren't subsidizing that and it also opens up a little more flexibility on the town side. We're going to use a little free cash to help offset healthcare increases and I'll highlight this in just a second, but because we can't throw one point two million dollars into the budget that easily. We continue to put additional resources to capital stabilization reserve fund and I'll point that out in a second. We're going to recommend that we, again, you don't have to vote anything tonight. This is where we are in terms of presentation, that we shift half of the OPEB contribution that we typically make at the annual town meeting, that we shift that to the special town meeting. Right now, we usually do a big chunk in, in May and a chunk in in the fall. I've got to recommend that we kind of split that first contribution and shift half of it, which is about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to the fall this year. So we still make it, but we just make it, you know, and, and really doesn't delay it. It's just a couple of months. So, um.
And you'll have free cash certified?
Free cash is certified already. Oh, yeah, we, but it's.
For next year, because special town meeting is earlier.
So, yes, we're going to try to move everything much faster. So, um.
Because that predicates what we can put into.
Right.
Yeah.
And then one of the things we're doing is we're juggling some positions. So we're now dedicating more administrative staff time to support facilities procurement. It's not a new headcount, which is kind of changing how people work. We have to be creative with what we have. So I think that's kind of, well, we have a kind of a series of dominoes. We have someone retiring in the next couple of months and that's going to allow us to, to, to actually modify three different positions. So I think we'll, you know, it's, it's the kind of creative budgeting, which you've, the more it's called for, but it's something we just have to do to make things work. So that's a super quick overview. Let me just, if you can. I think. A little bit different. So it's a little bit different and you'll see the highlight. It's different. Well, I need to, I'll review. So, um, so on this other one. So, um, the, I want the highlight, again, if you can, can you zoom in a little bit? There we go. So, um, so the, the capital contribution, I didn't show last time. I don't want to show it now. So there's money coming in from free cash up top and it's going in below. So you can see here, still, still. See a hundred thousand dollars coming in.
Yeah.
And this number's on a hundred thousand.
Okay, yeah.
So. And then this is what I was talking about with the, with the OPEC.
Yeah.
So everybody coming on the top and then we're having it and the other half will go and falls. Otherwise, it'd be a two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars change if, if adjusts it. And these, these show, the app years show fifty percent too. That may not be that way. I've just done it for the time being, you know, the, the app years are obviously always but this is the year. So I just wanted to show those points. Um, you can take that down.
So, so can I just?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so on the, on the OPEC trust fund, so essentially it's, it's taking the majority of the contribution out of the operational budget historically. And because that number used to be, say, two fifty, right?
It's been growing.
It's been growing out of the operational budget and then supplemented with free cash. Now, now we're kind of having it and we'll, we'll commit to the whole number with free cash.
We're committing just to keep the policy, but just use the free cash as the, as the.
As opposed to the operation.
Right, because that's a, we designed to generate some free cash and have it there that said, if there was a problem, for some reason, that's something I would go to the board and say, you might want to reconsider that policy for a year or two rather than have to go to personnel or operations and say, you know, we have to. Because this is a long-term issue. That's that. I still, we're still, I'm still recommending to stay committed to pay this for this thing. So, um. Okay. Question?
So you're just moving it from one column to another, so to speak?
Well, we're, we're, we're deferring the payment from May to, to fall.
All right. So, so normally you're, what we would pay in May, you're putting into the.
Half, half, half in the fall and then half in the spring.
Talked to OPEC committee on that?
Yeah, I actually had a long conversation with the vice chair the other night, day about this. So.
And that's.
Well, the, the, the goal was, are you staying committed to the policy? I said, yes, I've got to recommend that we still meet the number, but I'm just going to, we're going to just shift the payment cycle. And that, you know, again, the, the most important thing is that the money goes in. So the, the commitment to the policy is to make the payment.
So the OPEC committee did not.
They haven't voted or anything, but I did, but I, but I did make them aware of it. So.
So they're aware of it?
Yep.
They have not approved it?
They, they haven't voted and committed.
I don't think they've met.
No, they haven't met.
They haven't met.
But I did, but I, you know, I, I had a good positive conversation. So.
So, so the policy is a funding amount. It's not a funding source.
Correct.
So, so as long as we adhere to the policy amount, the funding source is at the, at the discretion of, you know, the town manager and the select board essentially.
Yeah. That's true. That's fair. So that's where we are at the moment and so we're going to now, at your request for the board, start to deep dive a little bit and what you have now are a couple of different things. So you should all have this in the one drive. There's, we're starting to put together a full budget book again. So what's in here are a little mission statement, what, what a department does, what boards committees they interact with. Accomplishments of the past year, goals of the next year, changes in the budget and it's the high-end budget, it's not a line-down budget here. And you have police, fire and harbor. And then separately, Chief Quigley has sent you a little summary, which you should also be on the one drive. Or you may have printed that. I think Tracy gave it.
Tracy printed them, yeah.
And it's just a highlight of, of, of that department. You'll hear from the chief in a minute. Chief Dockery also gave you a highlight. This is more on personnel, which, which is a little complicated, but, and that's more on his budget. And then to start off, we have our harbor master. Lori Gibbons is here. Her budget is kind of simple. Very important, but very simple. And as a one pager that you have.
Yeah.
For that. So, um, do you want to? I'll stay up here if you want to, please. I'll, I'll make you sit here alone.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for coming.
Yep. No problem.
So, um.
So basically the, it's a very simple budget. I feel like full-time personnel is the harbor master. There's seasonal who work primarily in the summer, but they are available on and off during the rest of the year as needed when the boats, not only, but whether it was for the water, but to maintain the vessels because they come out and they have to be.
And docks worked on and, you know, chores all winter.
So she has.
Weekends.
So it's, it's, it's not a, it, it, the, things happen over the winter.
Right, right.
And then there's just an expense line, which is, you know, fuel for the parker and the boats and, and, you know, just the paint and stuff you use.
Yeah, the bottom paint and, you know, maintenance of the boats and.
How many, how many seasonal workers do you have?
Uh, two.
Oh, two, okay. And they're, I would assume full-time in the summer, kind of like forty hours?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they, they have to work weekends. It's not an option.
Okay.
And, but then they can decide, you know, their weekday schedule.
Okay.
So if they only want to work four days, that's fine.
And other than a holiday like Fourth of July weekend, are they both usually on at the same time as you are?
Every, yes.
Okay.
They're never there without me there.
Okay. Are, are they on together other than big weekends?
Uh, yeah, basically.
Okay, all right. Okay.
I mean, other than the, the base salary change for harbor master, there isn't a lot of other change proposals, but.
Okay. Improved infrastructure for the commercial fishing fleet with conveyor belt. Has that, isn't that approved?
It's, it's been approved, but it just says it happened.
Okay.
It was originally set for, what is that?
Florence Wharf.
And the plan is now to put it on the main government island pier.
Yeah.
But it's been worked into the bigger conversation about the repair to government island. So.
Okay.
Still.
And it's not something transferable, like you couldn't set it up temporarily in Florence Wharf and then move it?
Originally, we were going to do that.
Yeah.
And then, um, we decided that it'd be better to set it up at government island where it would be used by more fishermen.
Right.
Florence Wharf is very crowded.
Yeah, it's tight.
There's not much room.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Mr. Flex, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Grady?
No, no, no.
Mr. Creighton?
Well done, Lori.
Mr. Frog?
I just want to ask, and I know it might be a part of a separate conversation with capital budget, but for the goals of coming here, we also had a new building for the harbor master office.
Yes.
And so I just want to ask if there was a new building there, how would that assist you in performing your duties as the harbor master?
Uh, well, it would be bigger. We would offer bathrooms to, or bathroom to the transient boaters, uh, which is very important income to us. And it's, my office is very cramped, very small. If you've ever been in it, it's. Um, and it's, my office is very cramped, very small, if you've ever been in it, it's tiny, um, so it would be larger. Um, and it would be properly heated in the wintertime and air-conditioned in the summer. We have heat and air conditioning, but it's not, the work environment isn't great.
Great, thank you. I'll maybe for the questions.
Great, thank you.
I think you're up next, well, then Chief Quigley go last, okay?
Yeah.
He's online anyway, he's sitting at home in his.
He's always on the thing.
Good evening, everyone. Grab my eyes. So for FY twenty-six for the fire department, uh, prevent, for presenting to you a level service funded budget that's gonna come in at, uh, three point two million dollars, and the budget's broken down into three subsections, uh, total personnel salary, time and expenses. Uh, total personnel salaries, one point four million dollars, uh, overtime expenses, uh, five hundred twenty thousand dollars, and overall general expenses for heat, lights, equipment, gear, repairs of vehicles, fire equipment, uh, two hundred sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. And for personnel, there's two subsections, you have administrative salaries, which include, uh, myself and assistant chief, that comes in at, uh, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars. Uh, operational staff, which includes, uh, four captains, four lieutenants, and sixteen firefighters, uh, that is at two point one million dollars for grand total salaries of, uh, two point four million dollars. Any questions on just the salaries? Admin and staff?
Just, go go ahead, Mr. Flex.
Just real quick, this is all under union contracts for the majority of the force.
Yes, yeah, of the four captains, four lieutenants, and the sixteen firefighters, it's all under a collective bargaining agreement.
And does that, does your your estimate include, uh, it has to include some kind of increase?
It's a two percent call uh uh increase right now, okay?
And you have steps and columns?
There are steps and columns in the in the collective bargaining agreement, um, that is, if you, next page over in your packet, you will see, um, where it's broken out, you'll have four captains, the four lieutenants, and it tells you their steps, where they are in the contractual agreement. Uh, and there is a service, um, breaks out where their their pay comes into play, okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a few, but I don't want anyone before I.
Go ahead.
Okay, so out of the two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, that includes utilities, you said, and and general expenses, right? And anything that's capital-related would be separate?
Correct.
Okay.
So I can bring that up, I'm a big capital request.
For for this, yeah, you, yeah, please.
Okay, yeah, so, uh, for FY twenty-six, um, requests in place are, uh, two thousand fourteen ambulance, and that request is, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, so.
So why don't you talk about how you have, is it A one, A two, and you can cycle them, and how long the lead time is for a new.
So, right now, our ambulance one, which we put in the surface in twenty twenty-one, is our main primary piece, and our ambulance two backs up A one when it goes down uh for mechanical repairs, or when we have, um, events in town, like road races, triathlons and so forth, we're able to, fireworks, we're able to spin up a second ambulance, so that comes into play. So the two thousand fourteen ambulance, ten years old, eleven years old, has a hundred fifty thousand miles, and in the capital plan, we usually give ten to twelve years, uh, for an ambulance, the first five to six years is the frontline piece to the community, and then the last five to six years, it serves as a secondary uh piece to the community mechanic reserve, and again, when we need to staff it up for events in the community, so that's how it works. Right now, speaking to not just ambulance salespeople I've spoken to, but other chiefs in other communities, right now, lead times is three years for a vehicle to be, uh, built up, yep, yep, um, speaking to some of the sales personnel for the ambulance companies, uh, they got hit by COVID, they had shutdowns, and when they reopened up, their staff didn't come back, so, um, and that's what's what's slowed down, uh, as for the building, is that they used to have, you know, say a hundred people on the floor, now they only have fifty people on the floor, so.
So will A two last another three years?
We'll get three years out of it.
Okay.
We'll get another three years, we'll have to, we'll have to, uh, there are times that if we do don't have an A two, we borrow an ambulance from other community. Um, and we have done that, but we try not to do that, because if we're borrowing something from them, they don't have something to fall back when theirs go down. And vice versa, they've borrowed our A two a few times too, um, Hingham a couple, a year ago, had motor problems, they couldn't get a motor to replace one that was broken, so they borrowed our A two for probably a week, um, so it's there, um, because if we can't provide a spare for them, guess what? We're providing service to them, and therefore we'll not be able to be, provide service for our people.
That's a good reciprocity, though, chief.
It is, oh, it definitely is, yeah, yeah, we work, we work hand in hand with each other.
So with the fire annex proposed for one thirty-five King Street, would that be the home of A two?
That would be the home of A one, our primary ambulance, because most of our call volume is on that three A corridor. Uh, the other thing too, A two right now isn't under our roof, it's garage behind the town hall. We built one thirty-five King Street, now we take that ambulance, we put it under our roof, and instead of ta- us needing about thirty minutes to ramp up A two, because we cannot keep supplies in A two because it's not under our roof, we burned it on our roof, now it only takes us thirty seconds to spin that up and get it serviced.
So you'll have it fully stocked and ready to roll, and then you get it.
Yeah, because it's under our roof, because a license, we can't keep drugs, we can't keep ALS supplies under it, because it's not under our roof, and we don't, I mean, you know, it's in a secure building, but it's not really secured and under our watch twenty-four seven, so.
Someone wants to get at it, they will try to get at it, so.
Yeah, but we.
I fully understand that.
But we don't leave the keys.
I'm talking more about the stuff they might have in the back.
Yeah, 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 exactly, exactly, the good thing is that building's so tight that you can only open the driver's door to get it out, you can't open the side doors to get at the patient compartment area, so.
Mr. Flex, do you have something?
No, chief, what we're doing, we're building up King Street.
Now, I know that, I know that, no, it definitely, like I said, a lot of our call volume is the three eight corridor, and it will help improve our response times to North Cohasset, to Beechwood, uh, section of town.
A two would go over to Elm.
A two would go to Elm, yep.
It's still in a secured environment, so it only takes a second to jump in, start it up and get going.
Away we go, yep.
We really kind of have to strategize then, when A one becomes A two, and you have the new ambulance, you have to start three years before if if the lead time cycle is the same.
Yeah, but we'll see where we are, I mean, next year, I'm gonna be coming back for even.
Even more.
Even more in the capital, so, yeah, you've probably seen the capital plan, yeah, for ten years out, uh, we asking for a little more than half a million.
Yeah, ambulance service has come a long way in the history, in about fifty years, our, the town's original, uh, ambulance was a converted hearse, uh, and it was manned by two explorer scouts, and that was over fifty years ago, and now today, you have the ambulances with all the high-tech, everything in it, and it's manned by the paramedics, uh, because all the firefighters are paramedics, so it it's it's come a long way, and then hopefully, once the, uh, King Street station, uh, gets approved and done, uh, to have them both operable at any time, to improve those response times will be a major improvement to the health and welfare of everyone in Cohasset, so. Hopefully, we can get this ambulance in in a proper time period, but some things are left to.
Yeah.
The marketplace.
Yeah.
So I have, I have another question on on OT, um, you're currently running this year, and overtime, about seventy-one percent ahead of your budget. Okay, your budget was three seventy-five, so I can see why you want five twenty for OT. Have you done the math to see what adding an FTE or two would do?
So that would hate, that would help greatly, the problem is, we have three open spots right now.
Already?
We're trying to fill those spots.
Okay.
So the OT is covering those spots that were down right now.
Okay.
Uh, we do have, we do have one hire, new hire, uh, that started just after the new year, but he's in training. Um, he leaves the academy February eighteenth, we lose him for ten weeks, then he comes back, he has to do his paramedic intern with us, he's already a uh, paramedic, but he has to do his field internship with us, uh, and then eventually he gets out on the street on his own, or working assigned to a group.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we have a list out right now for three openings, and we just had only one person committed to sign the list, so we're starting that process, so we're trying to fill that. So hopefully, we can get back up to twenty-four, so the part that was driving me overtime is beating down three spots.
Three spots, okay.
So that's the reason why.
Okay. All right, I'm just one, I'm just wondering if, you know, if we take, take the trend out of this year and look at, look at next year, with this person who's in training this spring, because the year begins July one.
Right.
You know, can we look to taper off, because we're looking for every penny, you know, that that we can, but it doesn't help to be unrealistic about our OT needs either.
Right.
Mr. Flex?
First, I want to be clear, I'm not looking to cut your payroll budget, but in your budget, do you assume full staffing for payroll? Or are you requesting payroll at three empty spots?
Three empty spots right now.
Okay.
We're trying, we're trying to hide, we're trying to fill those spots.
Okay, but the payroll that you're requesting in the budget assumes three empty spots or assumes full staffing?
It's full staffing, full staffing right now.
So it's for?
For twenty-four.
Twenty-four, even though you only?
Twenty-one, yeah, yeah, it's for twenty-four line firefighters.
Okay.
Firefighter paramedics, yep, yep, no additional, uh, individuals, but it's the twenty-four.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I I have one, just one more question, and and we we don't, we don't, the budget's gonna be really difficult, but if, is there something not in the budget that you, if you said, you know, gosh, I could use another one of these or one of those, or training or some something, is there, is there something that you you scraped out of the budget that you'd like to go back in?
Probably training, definitely training.
Training.
Yeah, more more training, that would be the big thing, and again, and to pay for training, you have to use overtime, so.
You can't have them on shift.
Yeah, you can't have them on shift and training, because then they get a call, and then the training's no good, because they had to leave to take a call.
Yeah.
So it would definitely be training, you know, you have to cover individuals that go to training and still provide service to the community.
Right.
So.
Is training in-house, or do you bring, is it a combination of?
Combination of both, we do some training in-house, uh, and then also, we also do some training where the members are off duty, and we'll, we have it um, in town, um, but some of the stuff, if we want to go to the burn building, you know, I have to take.
Thompson.
We try to go, we try to go to Moon Island in Boston, um, but again, it's their academy, they're a busy department, and try to fit into their schedule, it's kind of tough, too. And not only like Cohasset wants to go, the Hull wants to go, the Hingham wants to go there, Weymouth wants to go there, Quincy wants to go there, and all the metro towns want to go there, and then meanwhile, they're trying to train their own staff, run their own academy, so it's it's tough to get into Boston, and then the other academy, nearest burn building, would be Worcester, and it's it's too far away for us to go out to Worcester.
Didn't they have one chief over towards me in that area?
There's one at Stowe, Mass, but that's, that's, but again, their training recruits twenty-four, yeah, so, you know, couldn't get in there either, so.
Do the, do the firefighters get, um, like like in teaching, you get PDP points, professional development points? Is there the same kind of concept with firefighters, like do they get like extra certifications or licensing or whatever?
So when you graduate the academy, you come out as a firefighter one, firefighter two certification, and you maintain that throughout your career. Uh, as you get up to the ranks, you can go into fire officer one, fire officer two, fire instructor, um, fire prevention credentialing, uh, fire investigating credentialing, and then once you maintain it, you don't have to maintain any CEUs with it, you just turn that, obtain that certification, and you have it for your career.
Okay, great, thank you, those are all my questions.
Straightforward?
Yeah, pretty good.
Yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Well done, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have Chief Quigley?
Hey there, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, cool, um, Kevin, can you bring up our, um, the presentation I sent you, I think it's four or five slides? Oh, there we go, I think we're toward a, towards the beginning, I think we're at the end there, uh, there we go. All right, well, thanks for having me tonight, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-six already, our next slide, Kevin. Um, so currently, we have twenty-one sworn officers, that includes me, so there's twenty, twenty, um, twenty officers plus me, we have one full-time civilian that we share with the fire department, that's Betsy Howie, and we have a total of thirty-seven employees, the the remainder um, the of the the twenty-two full-time employees, um, the thirty-seven total employees, twenty-two are are full-time, uh, and those people that are are part-time are per diem, so they're not, they're not, um, they're not getting benefits per se. We have eleven and a half, well, say twelve, twelve people, um, working patrol along with three sergeants, so there's fifteen, uh, patrol officers working, you know, taking calls. Um, everybody else is either assigned to admin, school resource, or, um, uh, CID criminal investigation division, uh, next slide, Kevin. And so this is pretty, pretty telling, this this number here, in the last, in the last, uh, since the last ten years, calls have gone up a hundred and twenty-nine percent in five years, actually, five years, it goes up further, but it's been a steady incline, but in the last five years, we're at almost a hundred and thirty percent. Um, this year, we did, uh, this last calendar year, twenty twenty-four, we did sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-five calls, and these these are counted by the Shrek, so it's, these are, these are not our numbers, they're their numbers, and most of the call volume, the increase in calls is accounted for, for, we're seeing a huge spike in mental health calls. Uh, some of the facilities on three A that handle mental health and addiction, uh, causes us to be very busy, and I I think I can speak for the fire department as well. When it, when it comes to, uh, these type of calls, we we co respond with the fire department, so not only is the fire department, you know, seeing an increase in these type of calls, but we are too, uh, because we respond with them, a lot of times, um, these calls can become violent or require police intervention, or even a one or two police officers riding in the ambulance to the hospital, uh, with the paramedics and the patient, and it takes a car out of service for any call like that, uh, just for, um, officer and firefighting safety, as well as, you know, patient safety. Uh, we've seen a rise in criminal complaints, uh, motor vehicle calls, uh, that includes, um, officers running radar, issuing parking tickets, and also medical calls in general, uh, where we, we hate to admit it, but we're all getting older, um, next slide, please. Um, this past year, we assigned Officer Larrance, we moved him, uh, to the Dayhill, uh, school, the Sawyer Street campus, which includes the Dayhill and Oskut School. And there's some interesting stats here, uh, and I didn't realize this till I, till I had a meeting with the superintendent, but the sheer amount of people, um, on that, the that Sawyer Street campus, that were really, uh, we didn't have someone to to pay attention to to just that campus, but um, there's thirteen hundred and ninety-nine students in the district, and there's two hundred and seventy-nine staff members, and just on the, the the Dayhill campus, there's seven hundred and eighteen students, pre-K to fifth grade, and a hundred and thirty-three staff members. Um, the middle high school is six hundred and eighty-one students, grade six to twelve, and a hundred and forty-six staff members, that's a lot of people. Uh, so it it's nice to have Officer Larrance there and Officer Taylor at the middle high school, so we're we're well protected now, and and Officer Larrance has been very, very well received, and he's working well with the administration in 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 each school building, and, uh, he's just a natural fit for for that position, so, um, with that position, we, we pulled someone from our line, Greg was in our line, part of our line officers patrolling, so now he's dedicated to the school, so we're really down one, um, on the line, next slide. So now he's dedicated to the school. So we're really down one, um, on the line. Next slide. So my initial request of this year was basically three point seven million dollars for a level service. Um, well, level service, uh, budget. And. After many meetings with Chris Senior, um, and many meetings with the Shrek, I think three at this point with the managers at the Shrek. Um, we, we see that, we're seeing some volatility with the Shrek numbers, regional dispatch. And the initial numbers that, that Chris and I got from Shrek were, um, north of five hundred thousand dollars. And again, after about three meetings, we got that down, or Chris got it down more, more accurately. Chris got that number down to about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, so. The Shrek request that I originally put in for five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Was reduced to four hundred and ninety. So it's down, you know, point one percent. It's not much, but it's something. Um, and as you can see, seventy-nine percent, seventy-nine point four percent of our budget is personnel. Thirteen point three, which is a pretty big slice of the pie, is for Shrek for regional dispatch. And six point seven is for expenses. And this year we've added, when I say added, we've moved, there was a line item in I T. That covered, um, parking management. We have a vendor that handles the backend of our, you know, we issue a parking ticket, collecting that money. And getting it back to the town and chasing people who are delinquent. Uh, there's a cost associated with that. It's about twenty. Twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars, depending on how busy it is, um, that they charge each year. So with. Between Chris, uh, the I T direct, uh, Ron Manad, I T, I T Director and myself. We thought it'd be better suited and better managed in my budget. So we moved that from I T. To my budget. So I think that accounts for the increase in my, my budget. It's just, it's a lateral move really, but it is twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, and just as a side note, we're, we've, we've contracted with the new vendor for parking. And we're seeing, the old vendor basically went out of, went out of business. It appeared they were unresponsive to any of our requests. They weren't collecting money. Um, so we're able to square that away. Um, we worked with capital budget, this board. And advisory to bring on a new vendor and they're really making a huge difference. Last year, we, we, we've collected in the last, since July, actually, we've collected over ninety thousand dollars in parking fines. And back fines for the past five years. Uh, we're able to pull this, the parking tickets. From the old system, the old vendor that failed over into the new system and we're able to capture that revenue that was outstanding. Uh, so again, it's, it's north of ninety thousand dollars, but it is about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars a year to manage the system. So. There is, not, not that it's, you know, we have a look at it as a money-making operation. It, it's just not, but, um, there is, it, it does generate. Uh, income. Uh, I guess I can entertain some questions, but the town manager has, uh. Has agreed with a three point, three point six eight five, ninety-two five, uh, number for fiscal twenty-six. And that is a level service budget. And that's what the S R O added to the Sawyer Street Campus and, uh, parking moved from I T to C P D.
Thank you, chief.
Sure.
Mr. Flex.
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Brady.
No, I have no real question, chief. I'd just like to say from reading it all, great fiscal management.
Yeah, it becomes a, becomes interesting towards this time of year, but we, we really, it, it, it's a cooperative effort and there's a lot of, lot of meetings. Uh, between, uh, the town manager, assistant town manager and, uh, and I.
Well, it's a nice thing to see a number go down. You never see that. But thank you for that.
And as you know, we had, uh, we just brought on three new officers that are backfilling for people who have retired. Um, or moved on for whatever reason. Uh, and it was. Part of the reduction is, you know, some of these people who retired have been here for thirty, thirty-five years. And that, you know, the people that are coming in get paid less and have less benefits.
Well, chief, by the way, I occasionally I run into people in your profession. And it's amazing, it's a tribute to you, how many of them know you and speak very highly of you. And I say I know you and we have discussions, but anyway. Uh, thank you very much for your service to the town. One question I have is on the ambulance services for the substance abuse, uh, facilities. Um. My understanding is that's not a, that's a pretty lucrative business if it's run right. And I'm wondering if there's any opportunity to get some revenue from the mental health, um, providers. To help defray when we're sending our resources over. And I'm not talking about it when we're providing services to our town residents. But we have a private facility that moved in and predominantly serves non-cohasset people. And, you know, I am aware that you spend a lot of time. Is there any mechanism where you can at least recoup some of that?
I, I, I'm not a hundred, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Um, I, I can, I can affirm that we are there multiple times a day. And these things are not, it's not like going to an alarm call. Uh, we are, uh, the, the, these calls take hours sometimes. And it, it requires a lot of our resources and the fire department's resources, quite frankly. Um, I'm not exactly sure how you recover that. They are taxpayers. They're paying the commercial tax bill. Um, but there is absolutely abnormal or the, the, there's a definite increase. Um, due to the, the type of business that's being run. And, and there's people coming in from all, all over the country, really they're being phoned in. And it's, it's a, um. It's really a revolving door. And, and again, there's no, there's no quick answers. There's no easy answers to some of the issues they're dealing with. Uh, and we're very sympathetic to those issues, but I'm also cognizant that, you know, there's eight other, eight thousand other people in town that. Also may need our attention at some point.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring it up. And I think it's very important, the service that they're providing. But the fact of the matter is, it is, it is a, a, a very substantial business. And, and part of what is inherent in what they're doing is very, very increased police and fire and emergency services. Which the town is, is basically bearing it. And I don't think they pay anything at all for every time you guys show up. And I don't know if there's a way that could be addressed.
I, I'm sure there's ambulance fees that are recovered. Um, as far as the, the police is a total loss. Uh, but the, you know, at least the ambulance, there, there's, there's a Medicare radar, however they bill. And if the people have insurance or if they pay it. That's great. If they don't, you know, the town, the town is going to have to write that bad debt off. Um, again, they, they pay taxes, they call nine-one-one and we go, um. These, you know, I, I, I don't know how to solve that. I don't know how to reconcile that.
I, I don't either. I just thought I'd put it out on the radar screen.
And I, and I've talked to Chris about this too, and, you know, we've gone back and forth and it, there's just. I, I don't know if there's a precedent somewhere or, or how to deal with it. It's, um, uh, it, it's definitely an issue.
Mr. Farag.
Uh, again, thank you. And thank you for providing the, um, the list and the aggregate of the calls. Um, that, that chart is, is, is chilling, uh, to see the amount of calls that have increased over the last few years. And, uh, to think of where the new police station is going to go on three A, it is not a moment too soon. And I, and I hope that that, uh, graph could be socialized, um, whether it's on the, I know you, you do a good job with the social media. Uh, for the police, but if that could be so, the number of calls that could be socialized and put on all social media so people could see. Uh, the amount of calls that are happening with the police and how, uh, the policing is a lot different than it was twenty years ago. Uh, and I think that's very important for the people to see, especially when the construction for the new police station is going to be coming around the corner here.
No, I agree. And that's a great idea to, um, put some of this, I, I wanted to give you guys first eyes on it, but, uh, I, I think. That would be eye-opening to the public to see how our res, how, how their resources are being spent, how their money is being spent. And it's, it's, um. One thirty-five King Street has not come a moment too soon. Uh, hopefully we can make this a reality. And it, I think it's going to be a game changer, uh, for the future of the department. Uh, when I first started, you know, we could sometimes go days without a call. And now it's, it's very, you know, there's a running joke in the station, you know. One officer in particular comes in for lunch, you know, sometime around noon, noon time. And as he walks by my door, he said, John, you gonna, you gonna get your lunch today? He says, it's always a gamble, chief. And inevitably he runs out the door with half a sandwich in his hand. He never makes it, the poor guy. There's, there's constant calls. I mean, they're not all priority one calls, but there's, there's always something going on. It's never quiet anymore. It just, it really isn't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, anything else? No. I just have a few, few questions. I'll try to be brief. So we have two full-time S R Os at each campus location. Um, but the school day, at least at the elementary levels, aren't like forty hours. Is that S R O pressed into duty in, in other areas?
They, they, no. The, the quick answer is no. They, they work half hour before, um. School starts at that campus, usually half hour after, in the half hour on either end. They, they will cover if there's an emergency, they'll cover. But generally they're not counted in Manning. And in the summertime, uh, when there's no school or during vacation time, they put in the line. They put in the line or in the summer specifically, we're going to have to look at this because we have two of them now. Um, in the summer, they were helping, the, the single officer was helping with recreation and, um, liaised on to, uh. Uh, recreation department with, with the camp, because it's like five or six hundred kids that attend that. So we, we're going to have to look at that. We have contract negotiations coming up. And it's probably something we're going to have to talk about. And, and Chris and I have been going back and forth a little bit. Um, trying to suss this out to, to figure out how we're going to proceed. But generally, um, the school resource office is not counted in. They are not counted in Manning during the week. And, um, they, they, uh. They'll, they'll work when they can in the summer if there's nothing going on in recreation.
Okay. All right. Thank you. My next question is on, um, O, O T. So it, it's, um. You have it planned flat to this year's appropriation, F Y twenty-five, and you're like at seventy percent of. The appropriation with the three new officers coming on. Would you not anticipate that O T would be going down?
Well, we, we have, we've, the, each officer, there, there's, there's a known liability that comes with each officer. So in other words, you know, each officer, in this varies on the amount of time in service they have. But each officer gets, you know, two weeks of vacation. There's an average of five sick days. There's, you know.
Yeah.
Ten days of training. I have a chart. It's called the known overtime chart. So before we even start. You know, I add up all the, all that liability, you know, that, how many vacation days we have to have. Uh, people, people afforded, afforded through the contract as well as average sick time. Uh, known training days, court days. We have these averages and we have a, you know, good history. We, we know, we generally know. What it's going to take. Then you add the fireworks and, you know, Memorial Day, um, and all these special events. So we have a general idea. Of what it's going to cost before there's, you know, someone out with a long-term illness or a major court case or. Um, you know, just call-ins in general. So that's right around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars before we start. Because we don't have enough people. We have structural overtime because of the way we, um, it, it's been the policy of passports to man the department short. We don't have enough people to fill the amount of shifts we have. Right? So the structural overtime. Um, and we usually deal with that in the spring. And that, that was a policy decision probably back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. It's remained that way. Um, and we've had, you know, blue ribbon commissions and studies and everything else. Ralph Dormitz, who was part of one and. Um, we had Trish Moss. We had a, uh, you know, and they, they looked at this. Um, up and down, left and right, and they come up with the same conclusion I have. We don't have enough people. Um, because we run a four and two operation. So you need like eighteen people on the line answering calls. And we're, uh, I think fourteen now, because those new offices, keep in mind, they're replacing. They're replacing people. Um, so they're not, there, there's no, there was an ad two years ago. We added someone to the department. And that did reduce things a little bit, but, um, we have structural overtime in, you know, until we either address. The minimum Manning standards or, you know, change the schedule. You know, completely upend the schedule, move from a five and two, our four and two schedule to, to something different, ten-hour shifts to twelve-hour shifts. Uh, things will remain the same. So we, we know it's going to cost five hundred thousand.
All right. You just said something really important. The, the three new recruits are replacing people. They're, they're not getting you from fourteen to, to seventeen. Where you should be. They're replacing people that are, are leaving.
They're backfilling. We, we had several retirements, you know, Garrett Hunt, Jimmy McLean, um, Jeff Trainor. We lost three people. Right there. Then we had a transfer to Winthrop. Um, so we really lost four people. We hired three.
Okay. And then my last question on this movement of, of the parking from I T to your budget, is it parking only? Or is it also traffic enforcement tickets?
No, that's just, just parking. That's strictly parking, um, handled by the town.
Okay. And the traffic enforcement tickets are handled by your department?
Motor vehicle citations, um, are handled through the registry of motor vehicles.
Oh, okay.
So that, 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 that's all.
I've never gotten one, so I didn't know.
Oh, you better knock on wood.
Yeah.
Um, and just one thing, you know, I, I want to, uh, highlight and just something that, that's positive and that has saved us all the time. It, it's hard to, it's hard to, to figure out exactly how much, but coming out of civil service was huge. It's a game changer. Uh, we're able to cut down the amount of times, I, I heard your conversation with the fire chief earlier, the difficulties. They're having. Well, we were having those same difficulties, you know, a couple of years ago. And I went, I, I went to Chris and we talked about it. We kicked it around. And, and we're able to, you know, with, with the, we, we had a bargain with the union. We had to get town, um, you know, town boards. Or on, on board with us and go to town meeting. How to change things. We work with town council and we're able to do it. We accomplished that. But I'm able to bring in people now, great quality people in a, a diverse, you know, work group. I can hire, you know, this, this is crazy. I can hire a female officer without. You know, the state telling me I don't need a female officer when I don't have any female officers. Um, it, it was, it. The, the system became so crazy during COVID that it just wasn't workable anymore. But, um, we, we've got a great system in place. Uh, the officers that we bring on that are outside of civil service have, you know, the same protection, if not better protection. Um. You know, with, with the contract that, that they, we wrote, uh, we, we co-wrote with the union and the, uh, the union higher-ups. And, uh, it, it's, it's just provided a lot of flexibility. We're getting really quality candidates. Um, the, the last three candidates that we hired that just graduated this academy, um, all three of them were in the top ten percent. Of the graduating class at the police academy, which is, which is amazing. And two of the officers graduated number one and number two. They were neck and neck. Um, and that's out of sixty-some odd people. So it's, it's just the quality of candidates. And, and we're, we're hiring, we get a female officer, um, a disabled veteran, a minority officer. So it's, um, it, it, it's, it's really been, it's really been a game changer and it's, it's been huge. And we are saving money. It's just hard to capture. Um, how much we are saving.
Thanks very much. Um, no more questions from us? Okay. Thank you, chief. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, um, town manager update.
I have one exciting piece of news to share. The scout bottle collection, yeah, three opens.
Right.
We're very excited. I'll just give my word about, about today. That's my, that's my exciting update. And, uh, we'll get into more budgets and I will be working on the next couple of agendas. So. But why not what other departments you want to have come the next time?
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and Trace, you'll get all of these into the, the OneDrive, all of these, um, budget documents. Oh. Okay. Great. Thank you. Slot board comments. Uh, Mr. Plax.
Nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Brady.
Oh, I'm pretty good tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Brayton.
Nothing to, uh, comment except thank you to the police and fire for an excellent job.
Mm-hmm. And, and Harbor. And Harbor.
Well, I always, no, she knows that without saying. I have two boats in the harbor, for God's sake. She's my best.
Okay. All right. Mr. Farag.
Great. Thank you. I'll be brief. I just want to, uh, thank everybody for the presentations for tonight. Um, and for those watching at home. As we go through budget season, um, there's going to be a lot on the plate and to make sure to be watching our meetings and there's the other meetings. Capital budget is another, a great meeting to watch, which you can go on the town website, the state's informed, uh, but till the time we have town meeting. Up in some of the decisions that are going to be made, not only between this town meeting, but the next town meeting, um. We're going to be, you're going to, whether it's the new police station, the town hall, uh, redoing the R T F. Uh, all of these decisions that are going to be made and the capital, uh, improvements that are going to be made to these buildings. Is, are going to basically reset the town, uh, not just for a year, but for a whole generation. Uh, so it's very important that everyone gets informed and understands all the underlying issues that go into them. Uh, because it's, it's not a moment too soon for any of these buildings that are going to house all. Uh, because it's it's not a moment too soon for any of these buildings that are gonna house all of our town employees uh to be fixed up, uh recreated and put our town into the twenty first century. So make sure to watch our meetings and then the other meetings that you can find uh on YouTube or the town website. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one quick comment. Um, the um, on January, um, what was the date? January twenty eighth, I attended the Open Space and Recreation um meeting. They had reached out about coming before the select board and I volunteered to go to them. And they had concerns about the cell tower uh going into Wheelwright Park. And um I got back to them with some some answers. And then there was um a significant amount of activity on social media of disinformation. Um, thank you to Chief Quickly for correcting it online. Um, and I just want the the town to know, because I've gotten an email from one resident and and talked to another about this. Um, this has been going on. It was approved unanimously at special town meeting in uh twenty twenty two. The land swap, chapter ninety seven land swap has been approved by the legislature. And it's point six acres out of Wheelwright Park for two acres out of uh five eighty five CJC Highway or the Esposito property. Um, it it's going to be approximately twenty to thirty trees coming down, not two hundred. And um it's going to be a monopole and not an ancient looking four legged uh rusted out cell tower from World War Two. Um, the um the service provider who will be installing the monopole, and Chris, please correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. Not only will be installing the pole, the the site location is off uh walking trails. They will be beautifying the entrance. They will be adding a few more parking spots on Forest Avenue, and they will be doing some um trail cleanup. So it's it's going to happen. The RFP went out. It hasn't been awarded yet. So the the project has been awarded and it's slated to begin after we have a conservation commission meeting. So other sites were looked at such as the RTF. Um, we had public safety officials, then Chief Sylvia and Officer Lennon rode around with service providers around town looking for where the best signal is. And let let's reiterate, the cell tower is going in for public safety. Uh, first and foremost, the uh coverage is for North Cohasset from Sandy Beach, Atlantic Ave, along Jerusalem, all of the windy um and and narrow side streets, all the way up to Forest Avenue, all the way out to West Corner. And so the selection was picked by our public safety officials because it 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 covered the most territory out of all of them, including the RTF, which was looked at. So this this isn't a late um late project ad under the table. This has been in the public domain for over two years. And um it's a project needed for public safety first and foremost. And um if anyone has any questions, please feel free to reach out uh to me or to the mount town manager's office. Um, and so that's all I had. So we don't have any topics. We don't have any minutes. So can I have a motion to adjourn at eight thirty five?
I'm moot.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, right on schedule.